I'd like to welcome everyone to the Clarkton Independence District Library Board of Trustees Meeting for August fourteenth. The meeting is called to order at six thirty-one. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Jan Gaffney.
Here.
Allison McFadden Keesling.
Here.
Nancy Moon.
Here.
Alan Panter.
Here.
Marilyn Palmero.
Here.
Maggie Sands.
Here.
Chris Schult.
Here.
Julie Meredith.
Excellent. I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
I move it.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Call to the public. Do you think the public have anything to say tonight?
Public, back over here. Wait another minute.
Yep, we added, we added a.
We added that already.
We added that, I went ahead and added it tonight. They, the, as part of the public comment, they suggested that we make the friends a report, since they come every single month.
Right. And so that is excellent, and we, yes, on the second page, we have no public tonight, so we will move on to the consent agenda. I'll accept a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. There are seven items. Is there a question about any one of them? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Now, the Friends of the Library Report.
Evening, I'm Jim. To all the Friends of the Library. This is a Dr. Westdo board meeting for the Friends this one, to give this office, and we typically don't have that unless there's something pressing. However, on business, there was a July children's book sale, one day event, that we had this July, that raised a little over a thousand dollars, so a thousand twelve point one. Very good book sale for one day, on children's books.
Yeah, that is good.
My latest information on funds are from earlier in July, but that was it, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and five dollars, fifty cents, and that does not count the book sale. We do have our big fall book sale coming up, last day of September twenty through the twenty-third, in here, that we're looking forward to for a good sale. That's definitely, I think.
Excellent. Any comments or questions?
I did, that's really impressive with children's books, which tends to, you know, be little tiny books and maybe not as expensive, that's, yeah, so that was good.
Yes, thank you.
The tent is great, great idea, and a nice size and.
It was a good time of year to do it. I forwarded the information to all of the early educators that I know, and I have several relatives and friends who teach, like, in the first three grades, so.
That's great.
So we'd like to continue that.
Inventory permitting, yes.
Yeah, okay. That was a lot of books, because they're, what, fifty cents or a dollar?
They're half the price of the adult books, yes. That was a good.
So that was a lot of books.
Yes, it was. It's very impressive.
Jim, did you say September twentieth is the next book sale? Okay, thank you.
Okay, library statistics.
So I have some things to point out on the statistics for you. First of all, July is traditionally our busiest month of the year, and it is, it did not, it definitely did not disappoint us this year, we were definitely very busy. Just some interesting things, on the day of week average for traffic, Monday is the busiest day, was the busiest day of the week, Wednesday was the second busiest day of the week, and Thursday was the third busiest day of the week. However, when it came to computer usage, Wednesday was the busiest day. When it came to information questions, Wednesday was the busiest day. When it came to circulation, circulation was busiest on Tuesday, which was not even one of the three busiest days of the week, so I'm, people are checking out more things on Tuesday, but they're coming on Monday. And then, interestingly, wireless, our busy day is Thursday, and study rooms, our busy day is Tuesday. So, I thought all that was very interesting. In terms of total visitors, we are up twenty percent in July over last July.
Wow.
We were down twelve percent in information questions, and just anecdotally, I'm thinking that last year, we still had not as many people coming into the building, we were getting a lot more phone calls. Now I think people are coming in and they're doing a lot of that.
Searching.
Searching themselves, shopping themselves. Before, they were having us pull more off the shelf, they were coming and picking up via curbside, we're not doing nearly as much curbside, so. I think it's just a reflection of people using the library in a different way again. But we did circulate over twenty-eight thousand items.
Wow.
And then Bill wanted me to point out that downloads, obviously, are still doing really, really well, we are fourteen percent above last year even, and he said that people who are using Canopy are specifically maxing out the number of checkouts that they can have. So the people who, who love Canopy, really love Canopy, and so, he thought that was interesting, and wanted me to share that.
Excellent, but people still are using curbside occasionally.
Still occasionally, yep, we're not going to get rid of it, there's still, it's still popular with moms with kids in the backseat, and if it's raining, that sort of thing, so, yep, yeah, we still have people who use it, so we won't, we won't see that going away.
Okay.
We like that still.
Okay. Library Director's Report.
So in terms of my report, CIDL won WDIV's best, vote for the best, competition in public library category for the fifth year in a row.
Wow.
We will be celebrating with a party on Friday, August twenty-fifth, from four to six PM, that will include a water slide, dunk tank, and ice cream. We will be using program funds provided by the Friends of the Library for this event, so thank you to the community for voting, and thank you to the Friends for helping us to celebrate. The library's summer reading program was a huge success. Summer reading program numbers are as follows, in the birth to age five, we had a hundred and seventy-one participants, K through five, we had five hundred and eighteen, teen, we had two hundred and sixteen, and adult, we had three hundred and eleven. And we also want to thank Bowman and Vibe Credit Union and the Friends of the Library and the volunteers for making it such a huge success. We could not do it without them. For the past few months, the IT department, along with the library staff, have been working with IGD Solutions on a project to redesign the library's website. The basic design and layout are complete, we are now working on the content by evaluating what is currently there, determining what will transfer to the new site, and determining what needs to be added. We have a goal of launching the new site sometime in September. At last month's library board meeting, we discussed the possibility of adding an EV charging station to the library's parking lot. Bowman Chevrolet has offered to provide the library with a two-port, Level Two charging station free of charge. The library would be responsible for installation and managing payment for the usage of electricity. Since last month's meeting, Nancy Moon and I have made additional progress researching the logistics of this potential project. We met with three electrical contractors, Hutchinsons Electric, Oak Electric, and State Electric. We requested and received a quote from each of these contractors. Looking at, we looked at the Flow EV Charging App, the software the EV station uses to collect payment, and tentatively worked out how the collection and dispersment of payment might work. We submitted a request to DTE to have a meeting to discuss adding a second meter and running an independent power supply for the charging station. Our initial assessment indicates that the cost of the project seems to be more reasonable than we expected, because there is a transformer on the power pole near the parking lot. Theoretically, a separate line of power could be run directly from the pole, trenched in the ground, to the edge of the parking lot, instead of boring under the parking lot from the building, which would be quite costly. This also means the power usage would be tracked by a separate meter, making it easier to differentiate between power usage for the building and power usage for the public EV charging, which makes it easier to reconcile at the end of the month. A meeting with DTE will be needed to fully understand if this would be feasible, but it is the strategy suggested to us by each of the electrical contractors. We have requested a meeting from DTE, but they are really busy right now, and they have postponed a couple of times, so we're still working on that. Any questions about that one? It's still a potential project, but we're looking into it more, a little more seriously, since it doesn't look to be as expensive as we thought it was going to be. Let's see, our initial assessment, our library cooperative, the Library Network, TLN, hosts networking meetings each month, so staff from libraries in southeastern Michigan can gather to share ideas and programs and discuss best practices. On Friday, CIDL hosted TLN's monthly meetings for youth and teen librarians. The meeting included an opportunity to give a tour of our library, and our Friends of the Library funded snacks for visiting librarians, so that was really fun to have them in the building. And then on the backside, I won't read all of this, but this is just something fun that Stacia provided to you, these are the top three book checkouts of summer by category. So, The Pigeon Has to Go to School was the number one picture book this summer, and the interesting one that caught my eye, in adult nonfiction, How To Absurd Scientific Advice for Common Real World Problems, I may have to check that out, because that looked fascinating.
That's on my list, stuff I wanted to read.
Yep, so these are all the things that were, that were most, and Diary of a Wimpy Kid is still really popular in the children's department.
This is great.
I just thought that would be fun. She provided this at our old staff meeting, I thought, oh, the board will like that.
That's fun. Look at the young adult fiction, one of us is lying.
Sounds good.
That's great.
All right, on to business, and the fun part here, number one, second quarter financial review.
Okay, so, I highlighted some things in the financial review to talk about. One of the things that I wanted to point out is, in the revenues line, penal fines and E-rate rebates, those are showing as negatives, a fifty thousand and thirty-three hundred, respectively. Those particular items come later in the year, we actually have received that penal fine check, it just came last week, but it wouldn't show up on this, because this was from June. That E-rate money doesn't usually come until November, so that's a little bit later in the year. We are under budget in terms of full-time wages, we're a little over budget in terms of part-time, I would probably attribute that to the fact that we were short of full-time employee for a period of time, and we were compensating using part-time staff to do that. We had some people picking up extra hours to help cover. It will likely balance out as we go a little bit further into the year. Health insurance looks like it's over budget, that is because we had an issue getting some payments made, and so there's extra payments in this first half of the year, but when they get reattributed back to where they belong, it will balance out, so. So that's just an issue when they got paid. Workers' comp is another one that looks like we are, would be over budget for, but that's one of the things that we have to pay by the middle of the year, and so I believe we have made the final payment on that, so that one is okay. Professional and contract services is a little bit higher for a six-month, but that's another thing that we don't use evenly throughout the year. The one that looks concerning, that is not actually concerning, is special events, adult and children, look like they are over budget. They are not actually over budget, so what happens there is that the Friends of the Library pay for quite a lot of our summer reading program, a significant portion of it. The library pays it upfront, and then the Friends reimburse us, we turn in our receipts, and they reimburse us for that, so we've put the money back into the budget after we get reimbursed from them paying for those things. There's also another negative that is a grants project, two hundred dollars in grants project, that is something that was misattributed to that line, so we'll need to move that into the line it belongs in. The other one that looks like it's a concern is insurance. Insurance is one of, our insurance is MMRMA, and that's the one that, we pay the premium at the beginning of the year, and then partway through the year, there's a rebate that comes. And the rebate is usually four to six thousand dollars, and that rebate hasn't come yet. So once that rebate comes, that will balance that back out again, so, and it comes in the way of a credit. Water and sewer is a little over for this time, or for the halfway mark, but then it's, again, it's summer, so of course we're using more water for the, for the lawn and the flowers. Let's see, equipment maintenance looks like it's very under budget, but it is not, because most of the stuff for equipment maintenance, all that IT stuff we pay for at the end of the year, most of it is due in October and November, so that one always looks like it's under, and it's, it catches up really fast in October. And then the last one is conferences and workshops, we had a lot of front-loaded workshops this year, we had those out-of-state workshops that we sent some folks to, which was new, that we had never done before, so. Any questions on any of that? We don't actually have any recommended budget adjustments at this time, because it will all sort of balance itself out in the next quarter, I think.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Can you talk a little bit about some property taxes, revenues?
Mm-hmm.
Is under the budget, now we, we have a winter property tax, right? So it's already been collected for this year.
We do, yep. We have, we've been getting quite a lot of revenue still coming in. In July, we got a pretty sizable check, so we usually kind of watch it, this is based on, the number that we budget is the number that is based on the property tax estimate, so our L forty-twenty-nine is what we use to estimate that. I think we're going to see it, more of it coming in before the end of the year, as I said, we got a large check in July that would not have been attributed on here.
To settle the check?
Um, yeah.
Is on the consent agenda? I couldn't, I didn't see what the amount of that was.
Yeah, there's, there were, there are checks that usually come at the end of summer, that usually balance it out, so I'm watching it, but it's, it looks concerning, but I'm not, I'm not frantic yet, so, I'll keep an eye on it.
Yeah, it's a pretty big number.
It is a pretty big number. It's not uncommon for it to happen this way, though, it's, usually at the end of summer, it kind of balances itself back out again, so.
Okay, excellent. Let us move to number two.
Okay.
Review and approval of accountant contract.
The library posts for accounting and auditing services every three to five years. As part of this routine process, a board-approved RFP for accounting services was posted from July eleventh through the twenty-first. It was posted to the library's website, shared with accountants and firms that have submitted proposals in the past, and sent to the statewide library listserv and southeastern Michigan library directors listserv, with a request that libraries share the RFP with their accounting service providers. A subcommittee consisting of Jan Gaffney, Alan Panter, Debbie Zielverla, Nicole Evans, and I formed, we received three submissions, including from our current accountant, the accountant that handled our 2022 QuickBooks reconciliation and migration, and a firm that provides accounting services to municipalities and audit services to a number of neighboring libraries. A summary of the three proposals is provided. After much discussion regarding library's needs and the candidate's various strengths, the subcommittee recommends Walnut Hill Bookkeeping Solutions LLC. This is a small local firm that provided our 2022 QuickBooks reconciliation and migration. In addition to being the low bid, we were impressed with our recent experience working with Walnut Hill Bookkeeping. They handle our project in a professional, efficient manner. Melissa asked good questions along the way, provided us with excellent support as we learned the new version of the QuickBooks software we had purchased, and was mindful and flexible with our schedules and project timeline. She demonstrated the practice of checking her work along the way and looking into the details of government finance to assure accuracy. While Walnut Hill Bookkeeping cannot provide the multi-layer support of a large firm, it does have the advantage over our current situation by being a two-person team to assure that the work can still get done in the event of a primary accountant needs support. Walnut Hill is also a local business, and Melissa, who would be the primary accountant executing our work, is willing to be available in person for meetings and software support and training if needed. For these reasons, the subcommittee recommends the approval of the proposal presented by Walnut Hill Bookkeeping LLC. In terms of funding, this is a budgeted expense, and the proposal being reviewed is less expensive than the current contract.
That was a lot of work. Well, thank you, all, yes. Are there any comments or questions about that? We do have, we have experience, and everything was very well laid out in our packet. If there are no questions, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we accept the budget, the, I'm sorry, the proposal provided by Walnut Hill Bookkeeping as presented.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we approve the proposal provided by Walnut Hill Bookkeeping LLC as presented. Any other comments or questions? That was quite a large packet. If there are none, all in favor, please say.
Could just, one, one question. The only library they've supported is this library, or she's supported, well, they don't, this one.
That is true, that is true. She's, she has five oh one C three background, and we had a conversation about that as well, that was a little bit concerning, but we did find that when we were going through that whole process of migrating, she was very quick to look up anything she wasn't sure of, to ask good questions, she understands that libraries are a little different than nonprofits, so I think she will be very proactive in making sure that she's following the rules, and will be willing to work with our auditor to assure she's keeping us in line, so.
Okay, and do, is it typical for our accountant to have regular conversation with our auditor to, on any questions or anything that concerns the head?
We have connected them in the past, our current accountant works with our auditor on a fairly regular basis when there are questions in preparation, and also speaks with us about things as well, so, our goal to have, is, it would be nice to have somebody local, so that we can have a little bit more of a team environment, our current accountant is pretty far away, and everything we do is remote, and it has become more of an email and phone call situation, and we really, I think, enjoy having somebody who is a little closer, so.
Okay, any other questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Okay, number three, discussion of Baker &amp; Taylor replacement check.
This, this one's a little complicated, so, everybody, hold on, okay. So Baker &amp; Taylor is a large book distribution vendor that we used to purchase many of the materials for the library for several years. Last year, we discovered they were having issues reconciling payments to the list of invoices that they were intended to cover. Nicole's been working closely with Baker &amp; Taylor Accounts Receivable Team for the past several months to help them get our account up to date. In May, Nicole discovered that a group of invoices that they were telling us we had not paid were connected to a check for five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-two cents that we issued on October fourth, 2022, and cleared our account on October eighteenth, 2022. Upon closer inspection, the check had been hand-endorsed by an individual. It was clearly fraudulent. We notified Baker &amp; Taylor that the check had cleared our account, and notified our bank on May twenty-sixth, 2023, to initiate an investigation. Baker &amp; Taylor submitted an affidavit indicating that they had not received the payment. At this point, we know that the check was cashed at Bank of America, and we are awaiting the results of the investigation. Our own investigation revealed that at least three other Michigan libraries have experienced fraud in connection with checks issued and mailed to Baker &amp; Taylor in Atlanta, Georgia during a similar timeframe to ours, although their checks were washed as opposed to being fraudulently endorsed. Baker &amp; Taylor has requested that we reissue the check. We receive the materials for which they are requesting payment. Our records indicate that we have paid them, but Baker &amp; Taylor has indicated through an affidavit to our bank that they have not received that payment. Our representative at our bank has indicated that the check fraud investigations have been taking a very long time, she said that she is still awaiting closure on a few investigations that she initiated in February. When the check was originally issued, it covered several small invoices, but reissuing the check is a request for a payment to make up for a lost check totaling five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Since it is over five thousand dollars, and there is a risk that we will not be reimbursed by the bank for the loss, it should be a board decision about how to proceed. In terms of funds, we do have the financial ability to make this payment, but we may not want to impact the current book budget and reduce the number of new materials that we buy this year. In that case, we may want to make a budget adjustment. If reimbursement from the bank is received at a later date, it could be classified as miscellaneous revenue and would revert to fund balance, so we could put the money back.
So, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So it sounds like this bookseller has more than, has multiple issues, so it could indeed be an issue with inside their own company, which is what causes me a little bit of pause.
It sounds, so here's, here's what we know, and Nicole is here to help me explain this as well, so essentially what happens is it goes to a lockbox at a bank, and then they have somebody who is processing them from that point. They are saying that it never got to the lockbox, that it was stolen via post office.
That's what the affidavit's for, so they're stating that it never made it to the lockbox.
It never made it to the lockbox, is what they're stating, that they never received it at all.
Money on the back of the check, not an employee of theirs, so they're stating that it never showed anywhere near their company, so, um, en route, it got stolen.
But this, because I had a similar concern, Maggie, that it's, because their bookkeeping appears to be so sloppy, that we're, you know, we're just now hearing that they didn't get paid for this stuff from last fall, it concerns me that they do have some kind of a problem in-house. I did, through all of this discussion, because I've been meeting with Julie and Nicole about this, it does appear that this particular check was not necessarily a result of that, but I think that's an issue that we do need to address, if we're going to, and we do, I, because I said, well, why are we still doing business with them if they're so sloppy, but, they're one of the biggest booksellers, and, and it's, and so I get that too, but.
And we have shifted, we have shifted to other booksellers at this point, but, as other librarians at the table know, Baker &amp; Taylor is the major one, and so essentially what happened, they've had a couple of situations, they did not transition, their, their system is very complicated, and they did not transition to the pandemic well, when they sent everyone home, their system did not work very well remotely for the first couple of years. So what Nicole has been unraveling is a mess from 2020 and 2021, that they didn't totally get cleaned up until 2022. The other issue that they had is that they had a malware attack at some point in 2022, so they sort of had a perfect storm of issues, and they are still trying to get all of that cleaned up. I feel like we're getting there.
We're a lot closer.
We're a lot closer.
The original amount that they had set up, we had back owed, it's closed up a lot, but this is a big chunk of what they are saying is back owed, of course, because essentially, like, a month and a half worth of invoices.
So this isn't, this isn't the totality of the invoices that they, that we supposedly owe them?
No, so the problem is, is that whenever I give them a new portion, and I say, look, these ones are paid via this check, they go, oh, well, we had that check paying these invoices, so now these invoices are open. So then I come through and say, well, actually, these are paid by this check, and they go, oh, well, now these, so it's a really long.
But you're identifying which invoices are being paid on this check.
Yes, I asked that question, too.
Right, you're doing that on a regular basis.
Yes, yes.
So they also have issues that it's not being sent properly, so even though it's sent with the check, the people who are inputting the information are not able to put it in correctly, because they just might not only get half of the sheet, or not get the sheet at all. So they requested that I send it directly to an email, so I put it in with the check still, but I also send an email each time a check was out, with that information ahead of time before the check was out.
They still need to clean up their in-house process.
Yes.
It should be automatic, if you get a check at Accounts Receivable that lists some invoices, that should be sent right over to the people who track that.
And they should have reached out and asked, if they weren't getting the revenues information, they had contacts with us, they could have reached out and asked, but again, I think the person that was originally doing that maybe didn't know to do that, or who knows, they were sent home, they didn't.
Yeah, I, I know, I know, but it's just.
It sounds to me like their problems run a lot deeper than just us.
Yeah, this is really basic accounting mistakes.
So the process, the process that they were using, and I think this, this all sort of happened during the pandemic, and I think what happened was, they had one set of people who were receiving checks and marking, we received a check for five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars from the Clarkston Independence Library, and they would attribute that to our account, and then someone else was supposed to then go through the remittance and say, this five thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-two cents covers these invoices. That was the piece that wasn't getting done for two years after they sent people home. So we get to a point in 2022, they sent us a statement that basically said, you owe us fourteen thousand dollars, by the way, you have a thirteen thousand dollar credit. Like, okay, so none of these invoices are paid, but we have this much that is accredited to you, and they had no.
That's embarrassing for them.
It is, it is.
I have to say, too, think of all the libraries in the United States, at all levels.
Right, I know.
I mean, we're talking school libraries, academic libraries, public libraries, and Baker &amp; Taylor is the primary.
For all of them.
For all of them.
We all buy from Baker &amp; Taylor.
When you're talking about what's coming in to this company.
I know, but it's so, it is so basic to match up.
Yes.
The invoices with the checks.
They create a lot of the problems themselves, because they invoice the way that Anne Mazan does, so if you order forty books, and they send each one individually, you get forty invoices.
Yes, I know, I've, I've signed that check many times.
Yeah, yes.
So the problem with that is that, I mean, we're a smaller scale library, and we're still doing every two weeks, like, a chunk of Baker &amp; Taylor, right? So you could imagine how many invoices they deal with daily, and if, who knows, maybe someone's at home again, doing this work, and it's like they have the support to ask, or they have to do in that situation, then they just do something like that and kind of get themselves.
So what is the impact of pausing and waiting until either the bank investigation shows something, or we think we are going to have to rewrite the check and have lost the money to this other individual?
I don't know that they're going to cut us off. From an ethical standpoint, we received the materials, and we do owe them this money. From an ethical standpoint, we received the materials and we do owe them this money, that, that part I can say. But the consequence is I, I do not believe that they will cut us off. They will just keep sending us emails saying, please pay this, please pay this, please pay this. So we could wait for some period of time. It sounds like it's going to be a while. Now, um, the other libraries that had this issue um caught it sooner. Apparently they weren't wading through what we were wading through, I don't know. But um, they caught it sooner um and have been reimbursed. So I'm not sure which bank, one of them was cashed at a gas station, another one was cashed at a credit union. I'm, I'm not sure if the, the other one was cashed at a, um, at a Bank of America or not. But um, we do know that the fraud investigations, according to our bank, the ones from Bank of America take longer. It's just a longer process for them.
I, I do believe that they are going to determine that it was fraud because.
It is obviously fraud.
It's quite obvious that if you make a checkout to a business name and it's cashed in, you know, little kid handwriting with a heart over the eye or whatever.
That's pretty much what it looks like too, it does, it's so obviously fraud, it's.
That, that, they're going to say, yes, it was fraudulent.
Nicole brought it up on the screen, I'm like, you have got to be kidding me.
So can you read the name?
You can read the name.
It's a legible name.
It's a legible, it's a, it's a legible name and it's beautiful, round.
So it shouldn't be that hard.
Handwriting, yes.
You have a name of a person who endorsed that.
Unless it's a fraudulent name, that's, yeah.
Right, and it was the positive somehow, it was cashed somehow, and a check that that's, is that size, most check, most of the banks are not going to let you come in and just cash it immediately.
So the accusation is that someone at the post office has been involved in this.
That's a pretty serious accusation.
I know. Well, they're saying that it got stolen somewhere between, we know it wasn't stolen up here because we're not the only library that had this happen. So we're pretty sure it got stolen on the other end.
We don't know what area the bank, the.
Not yet, they haven't told us that part yet. All they told us is it was cashed at a Bank of America, that's all.
I have a really hard time issuing a, a replacement check for something like this when this company clearly has some internal issues that they need to work out and then we're left to, at the mercy of the bank, who may at some point reimburse us, but then again, they may not.
Yep.
I think we make this company wait until we get some clarity from the bank.
I'd, I'd at least like us to consider, at least giving it a few more months, see if the fraud investigation couldn't um show some sort of progress that would help us. No, I, I probably believe it's going to happen, but just, you know, just resolving the issue and especially when there's, it sounds like there's still more outstanding would be also, I'm, I'm with you on the same thing. The other question would be is, should we start paying them by wire or something like that?
Well, that's what they would like us to do and I'm working on an ACH policy first and foremost and I'm bringing that, well, it's not going to come in September, it's going to have to come in October just because I, you don't want me to put anything in addition on, on the September meeting along with the budget. It's going to be a long enough meeting, so, um, so I'm looking to do that in October, but um, they are one of the, um, Jan is helping us with that. They are one of the vendors that we're thinking needs, needs to be wired. And that's what they requested, which means they're feeling the pinch of this problem as well, because they're saying it's not happening internally, so.
Where, what state are they located in?
They're in Atlanta, Georgia.
Feels like that should be somebody's road trip, Nicole.
Please, please excuse myself.
Well, and, and the reason I brought it to you tonight, I, I was perfectly content to tell them, you know, well, you can wait, you can make your, you can wait. But they wanted me to make a decision and I basically said, this is over five thousand dollars, I don't have the authority to just cut you another check. So it was their request that I come in and say to you, this is the situation, so whatever the board's pleasure is on this one, I can then go back to them and say, I don't have the authority to cut you a check, or I do have the authority to cut you a check, so.
Well, even if we wire the money, I'm like, Jan, their disheveled accounting isn't going to get any better.
Yeah.
And Nicole is still going to be spending hours and hours struggling to find out.
Well, they have a new, they have a new structure. So the new structure is that when, as Nicole said, when we submit a payment, you submit the check, she submits the check and the remittance together. But then we email the remittance list to a, the, to the remittance department and those are the people that, once the check has hit our account, they go through and attribute all of those.
I've been doing that this year, you know, um, for a couple of months. Um, our account statement as of this year, there's a couple miscellaneous ones that may be ones that were missed, um, maybe like five to six, which is normal, especially with how they invoice. Um, the rest of them are all from like June, July, which I believe they'll should be getting those checks very soon, um, just because of the process, how long it takes us to get the invoices and then pay them and everything. Um, but they're much more up to date this year than they have been in the past. So we are getting somewhere, it just takes time. And we could also suggest to them, you know, along with this, that the other miscellaneous ones that we do owe, as long as, you know, I can go through and try and find and make sure that we haven't paid those and we could make like a good big email of those ones.
Well, and we can make sure we got the book.
And the, the children's department has been, um, and actually some of the other departments have been using Ingram as well. So we are, we had used Ingram to some extent, but they're doing more, they're ordering from another book distributor as well, so.
So Baker &amp; Taylor, they can, um, because of how they do the invoicing, it's kept separate per order. Um, so even if there's three orders in a box, you get three invoices, it makes it very easy to tell who has ordered those books. Um, Ingram does it a little more concise together, which is wonderful, but then someone has to sit and look and say, okay, this book is, is the children's department, this book is teen, this book is adult, because it puts it all together. So the business is a different department, so it kind of is hard in a different way.
Time consuming in a different way. But the, the miscellaneous expen, um, sort of gaps we have right now with them, what's the total on those if you were to guess them out?
So I think the last one that they sent me, and again, this is just off the top of my head, I haven't talked to them in a couple of months, was like eight and a half thousand, so eighty-five hundred. So a big chunk of it is checked, that was missing, fifty-seven hundred, and the rest of it's just miscellaneous ones. Um, they didn't send us a statement for two or three years, so like it was a big chunk of time and we didn't see that those were not getting paid, so.
Well, we did not see that they were not getting attributed, they were getting paid. Yeah, yeah.
So we, we feel relatively confident that we've paid all of the bills that have come to us?
Most of them, yes.
Okay.
There's a few little stragglers that we're still trying to figure out whether or not they were.
The one that's a little higher is one of them with like a subscription fee that was like twelve hundred or thirty-two hundred, so that's why it feels higher. Um, so we pay to use their website.
What, um, in, in, from our processing perspective, what would cause it that we would have had a invoice slip through the process?
Um, that probably happened when Evan left and David took over. So they probably had an old email on account. Um, those ones are looked up differently than the other invoices because it's a different invoicing number and everything. So my guess is David was looking in the other one and he probably never even saw that that was even a thing. You know, you try to get everything, the next person, you switch over, but I think that's one of the things that kind of fell, fell in the crack. And then because they didn't give us the statements in a timely manner, we didn't know that that was kind of sitting there.
Julie, do you think it would be reasonable that in a month or two, we could come back with kind of a reset on the situation? We'd know what other, the other miscellaneous, not the check we're talking about here, but the other and where everything stands and we could take a second look?
Yeah, that's, that was kind of my thinking on it, but I wanted to bring it forth and have you have a real meaty conversation about it because this is, it's been very exciting since May, trying to get all this sorted out, you know.
I just sort of wandered into it one day, I was talking to Julie and Nicole came in and started talking about this, the next thing I knew, I was part of this decision-making process.
Well, we'd like to have it done by December thirty-first of this year.
Absolutely.
That we don't carry this problem into the next ordering year.
And, and maybe Bank of America will be fast enough to, I, I really do think they're going to determine that it was fraudulent, but.
It's very obviously fraudulent, it's just a matter of them getting to us. The thing that was most disturbing to me about it, um, and I even asked our representative from the bank, um, when I called Flagstar and I said, how on earth did they see this signature and allow a fifty-seven hundred dollar check to be cashed this way? And she said, well, that bothers me as well, and she said, they must just have a much higher threshold before they look at something. I was like, that's a really high threshold.
Yeah, like an online deposit. And like, so it might not be high enough that someone, or maybe a spot check, or who knows?
Yeah, yeah.
Crazy.
I know, I know, well, apparently it's a, the, the, our bank rep did say that, um, that California is really struggling with, with these kinds of things that are being, you know, stolen out of mailboxes and all this check fraud that's been happening. And she said it's, they're seeing it in a certain other states and she said it's just starting to pop up in Michigan, she said, but it's only a matter of time. So that's why we're looking at this ACH policy and the possibility of at least doing some, some payment that way. But we have to have a process to make sure.
Paying by check is generally not, you know, the safest way that you can make payments.
Yeah.
You've got, you know, your, your bank account number is right on that check, I mean, as it goes out the door, you know, so somebody could potentially, you know, hit your account with that. It's not the best.
But when, but if we start, if we start doing wires, then we have to really look very closely at our approval process.
Yeah, our checks and invoices to make sure this.
We need to make sure that we're not just, you know, sending money.
And also right now Julie is the only one who can create an ACH, so right now Debbie is printing, doing the checks, so that would have to be another process.
Okay, you guys will work that out.
Yeah, it's going to take a little bit of, a little bit of thinking, we're, we'll manage it, I'm not worried about that part, but it is a different process, so.
So is the consensus, we want to revisit this in two months?
I think that's good.
Okay.
If that feels fair to Julie and Nicole in terms of timeline.
Till back on the agenda in October? Okay. Along with the ACH policy?
There you go.
I bet we have progress.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you for your patience and waiting through all of that with me as well.
Number four, resolution to adopt public comment policy.
So during a recent training, it was suggested that library boards should have a policy governing public comment procedures. Um, so I reached out to the library's attorney, Anne Searing, um, for advice with developing an appropriate policy that includes all the necessary details. The policy and resolution to adopt, um, to adopt the policy were developed and presented by Anne, um, and that is in your packet.
I had earlier asked Julie if we could limit it to X number of comment, you know, X number of people, like ten or twenty, but.
And I asked her, I said, no way.
No way.
Nope, that is not okay.
I mean, have we ever had a moment where, other than the board? And maybe a person or two?
I think the wise thing in today's climate is to be prepared, so that we make sure that our policies are clear and transparent, whether it's book, whether it's selection of materials or whether it's reconsideration of materials, whatever our policies are, they should be clear, so that we're not winging it.
Right.
When, if a situation arises.
And should the occasion arise and you have fifty people in the room all wanting to address and you don't have a time limit in place, we can all just bring our sleeping bags. Because we'll be here for a while.
And we're going to be here for a while, fifty times three minutes anyway, so.
But if you don't have a time limit, they.
And I think that's why the policy is so clear.
Yes.
I mean, it's so specific.
So the heart of it is each speaker gets a minute, or I mean, three minutes.
Three minutes, unless, unless it's a group, in which case they could designate one person and they could have five minutes.
But then you can't stop them from each individually, you know, speaking their own three minutes.
Right.
You can encourage it, you can require it.
So they do encourage it if you're going to be repetitive in your commentary, consolidate, but.
And this is, this is one of those things that should be in place in the same way that, that we have a FOIA policy, we have a very detailed FOIA policy. We post it on the website, um, we don't, not going to get a lot of FOIAs, but when we do, you want to know what the process is and you want to be able to tell the public what that process is as well, so. It, it does prevent that winging it, as she said.
The only um question I have is if we wanted to give an exception to a speaker to go over their three minutes, say, for instance, they have material to cover that we want to hear that, you know, will take necessarily longer than three minutes, um, how do we address that?
That's a good question.
Always put them on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, you could, yeah, it's true.
What was that, what did you say?
We could put them on the agenda for the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea, yeah, because I think you have to have carte blanche, three, three minutes is three minutes, doesn't matter what you're, what you're saying or not saying.
If, if you say, well, we'll put you on the agenda for the next meeting, then you're saying we're taking you seriously.
Right.
We want to hear what you have to say.
Right.
But this is our policy, so we'll do this.
And I think that's sort of the point of the public comment policy is when somebody brings something forward, um, you're really not supposed to respond or engage, you're supposed to take that in, make your notes, think about it and address it later. Um, because a lot of times questions are asked and instead of responding to those questions, um, you don't want to speak off the cuff and, and misquote a policy or, or anything like that. So the idea is you have that opportunity to go back and, and look into it and address it properly, find out whatever information you need in order to answer said question.
And, you know, the other thing is, is that, I mean, we don't get a lot of public in here, but if we did get someone who was in here and they were speaking in a respectful way and, you know, and their topic was friendly, we could just choose to not enforce the three minutes.
Can you do that? Can you just not enforce the three minutes?
You don't have to.
Well, I, like, I work the school board meetings in Oxford and like the speaker will get three minutes, but the board will ask them questions and stuff after I've allowed them to respond, so I don't know if that would be included with any policy that you guys are talking about or.
But that's, that kind of goes against what Julie just said, where, you know, you're supposed to, as the board, you're supposed to sit there and, and listen to them, but you're not necessarily supposed to interact with them.
Yeah.
And I see that a lot in my clients where they'll get into this debate, like the city council and it's, and it's not good.
It's very easy to get, it's very easy to get drawn into a conversation and, and that's not the point from, in terms of Robert's Rules of Order, you're supposed to then take that information down and then respond at a later time because it's not part of tonight's meeting. They're supposed to speak on topics that are not, they may be speaking on topics that are not necessarily on the agenda, in which case you're not supposed to add it to your agenda just because they've come in and asked you a question about something, you're not, they're not supposed to change the agenda for the evening.
And three minutes is a long time. And three minutes is a long time and.
Well, I'm just getting started in three minutes.
But I, but I think, I think that three minutes is a good cutoff, I think that it's a good cutoff for whatever it is that they have to say, three minutes and that's it, I think it's a great policy.
Well, and the, the interesting thing is, as we've talked about before, um, Anne Searing is a library law specialist. Um, so this, when we, when we ask her to write up a policy, she doesn't write up a brand new policy for us, she writes it up based on policies that she's been writing for libraries. So this is a template of a policy that she's been developing over the course of the last however many years, she's twenty-some years that she's been working in libraries. Um, and so this is a template and so she's basically saying, here's the template and I charge X amount of dollars for a template and then I, she charges us her hourly rate for changing it and drafting it in, in other ways. So, um, this is the template and I, I looked at it and thought, that looks pretty good, um, so.
Well, it's, it's a fairly basic concept and it's one that is used by a lot of different governmental bodies. Um, so it, you know, I don't think you need a whole lot of elaboration.
I also like J, which encourages the public to contact the library during regular business hours and ask questions. I am not as fond of the phrasing in G, if a speaker includes specific questions, the board has no obligation to respond. It's, that suggests that you could respond and we really do not want to respond at that point. So, but I am not unhappy enough with it to want to change it, but having, it sounds like we have no obligation to respond, sounds a little off-putting or a little, you know, we don't need to respond to what you say. I just think, it's just the way it's, it's the way it's pronounced, yeah.
I think you wanted to see more like, you know, without any of the answered questions.
Right.
Yeah, versus response, we're going to respond to that.
Right.
And say, okay, thanks for your concern, we'll talk about it, whatever, yeah.
So without, you know, or even if we had a huge number of people, we might say during public comment, we welcome all your comments, we will take notes, we will not respond to these during this meeting. That way, at least you know what the rules are and it's not like you're picking on some particular person.
Well, it's so much easier to have this conversation when you don't have a room full of people waiting for you to decide which policy is, so.
Right, it's much better to have the policy in place.
Yep, it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it.
Right. The only thing that it doesn't allow for is, um, if I had a question of a, technically I did or didn't understand what somebody said as a speaker, it doesn't necessarily, it's not permissive on asking a clarifying question. And if we're fine that we're silent on that because we think it's assumed, then that's okay. But if as a board member, um, it, it's probably not appropriate to have a bunch of sidebars with people to better understand it, they came to give public comment, so.
Do you want me to, do you want me to take this back and have her address how to do that?
I'll bring it up, I'm just bringing it up to the board for discussion, so someone makes a, a series of concerns. So someone makes a, a series of concerns, and you're fuzzy on some of the details of what they're trying to convey. Do we feel prohibited from asking a clarifying question?
Well, if we, we're going to say, you know, we hear what you have to say, we're going to put you in on next month's agenda, then I'm assuming that Julie is gonna make sure we clarify what they were saying before we put it on the agenda.
But it might be a case of not be, not rising to the level of, we wanna put it on the agenda, but we wanna make sure that if we're going to investigate a claim or do whatever, that we actually understand what the claim is.
Well, I, I guess, I think what I'm advocating for is something that's slightly less formal. Like, if somebody has just something, and I just wanna ask a question about, you said this, can you tell me a little more, or whatever it is?
I, I think you have the ability to do that.
Okay. I just don't know how Robert's Rules of Order or anything went.
I, I think you do have the ability to do that, in the same way that when, when Jim comes in with information about the friends, you ask him questions, and, and you engage with Nicole.
If it's implied, it's fine with me.
Well, we ask for.
I think so.
Yeah, some board, like, I wouldn't ever talk, I would never say anything, because I'm, because they're public, so being a little more informal about that.
Well, yeah, I mean, in some, you see Clarkson City Council, I don't know how independent township work, Clarkson City Council's very informal, but I just wanna make sure we continue. Whatever is our, our approach should stay consistent when this, with this policy in place. Like, we can't, we can't all of a sudden decide to hammer down.
Yep.
Or, you know, vice versa, i- if that's, tends to be our.
I think the idea is that, that this is in place so that if you have a situation that is unusual, where you have a lot of people in the room, and you need to get, still need to get through your agenda. We tighten up ship when you've got, you know, as, as the example, fifty people in the room, like, okay, everybody needs to get their three minutes, and we're gonna make all these notes or whatever, but then we have to do our meeting, or we're gonna be here all night.
Yeah, and, and that was kind of my clarifying question, is to understand, as long as we all feel comfortable, and we all think we're saying yes to the same sort of concept here.
Well, the, the one time we did have a public person, was the person who asked about the millage. He had a question, you know, there was a dialogue, and I think he was quite satisfied, and.
I mean, it was probably around two or three minutes.
Yeah.
And it was me, Julie was answering some of those questions about it, it was during when we were putting up the millage information during the board meeting. And it was not.
Right, and that's the slightly more informal.
Yes.
Yeah. It was very cordial.
One person.
Yeah.
Right.
But I like how you're, you're, I think you have to say your name, and where you're addressing.
Name and address, yes.
We didn't have that rule before, and so I think that that's important, because I know at the township board meetings that they've had that, and I think that's a good rule, so we know who we're talking to.
Yeah.
If you did need more information, you could contact me, or.
Right.
Right. Follow up. Also, it's, and a public meeting is a public meeting, and you don't have to be a resident to attend a public meeting, but it would make a difference to me as a board member if the concern was being brought by a member of our community, or someone from outside that may just be a, a muckraker.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
And those people float around.
Yes, they do.
I just have one little thing I noticed about this. Item three D refers to a three-minute time period, item three H refers to a five-minute time period.
That's if you're having a group speak. If you're speaking on behalf of a group.
Oh, so it's different.
Yeah, so if, if, if you have several people in the room that are all talking on the same topic, and they're willing to let one, designate one speaker, then you give five minutes instead.
Gotcha.
Instead of having five people each talk three minutes, if they're all gonna say the same thing.
Okay, got it.
I think that was, I think that was her intention.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I had to read that twice, too. And we didn't have any particular, there's one thing in here about people being polite. In other words, as the, as the current president, I would have to recognize each person to speak.
So that you could place them in an order.
Right. Now, if, if someone became agitated, then, I'm not sure exactly what our policy, I mean, then, we have to talk about, if we're expecting a large number of people who might become agitated, it doesn't really address that, but.
I think that's a discretion, discretion probably of the.
At some point, that they, our patron behavior policy would then come into play.
Oh, good.
Because we do have a patron behavior policy that would say that, you know, that the public needs to behave in a particular way, and not mistreat the staff or the board.
We like civil discussion.
Civil discussion. It does say something in here about that.
Yeah, it does.
Within the bounds of civil discourse.
Yep.
It does say speakers may not breach the peace of the meeting.
Say it again?
In F, it does say speakers may not breach the peace of the meeting.
Don't yelling. That would breach the.
It's tricky, though, if you don't have any, any enforcement. I was at Pontiac City Council meetings where there were police officers standing at the door. That's very helpful if you.
Let us.
I mean, they were there anyways, because that was, you know.
Yes, that that would not.
Let's hope we don't ever need that.
Indeed.
Well, we might, if we were to have a very contentious issue, we would probably be aware of that before.
Right.
Ask them to come.
All right. Are any other comments or questions? We'll have to thank Ann for clarifying all of that for us.
It's great.
Um, I will accept a motion. I move to approve the resolution to adopt the public comment policy as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution to adopt the public comment policy as presented. If there are no other comments or questions, we will call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Alison McAden Kiesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Alan Panter?
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy?
Yes.
Maggie Sands?
Yes.
Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution number five.
All right. So, um.
Trying to do this before anyone else.
It's time to set the meeting schedule for 2024 before we don't have the room ever, because the, the staff is chomping at the bit to plan for next year, so.
That's a good staff.
Well, they're already, I was just talking to Hannah a little while ago, and she said, I need to plan Halloween, I'm not quite ready to plan Halloween. Um, so the first question is, do we like Monday still? And then we like six thirty still?
Yeah.
Okay. So then what we need to do is go through the calendar and pick.
Pick dates.
Pick dates for that. And I need to pop into, whoops. Brought the calendar with me. Need to get to January.
January should be nine or sixteen.
Yeah, we usually.
January is usually quickest.
Usually we try to do it relatively early in January. It looks like MLK Day is the fifteenth. So maybe the eighth.
Eighth, eighth.
Sounds good.
Okay, January eighth. And then we usually try to hit the middle of the month.
Twelfth, so we avoid President's Day?
It looks like the twelfth has already been taken. I told you they were jumping in there, how about the nineteenth? Oh, that's President's Day.
Yeah, the nineteenth is President's Day, so that's.
Should we do the fifth? I know you said the middle, but do you wanna do the fifth? Otherwise, we're at the very end of the month.
Yeah, we don't, do we wanna do the fifth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And then March.
Keep it early?
Easter is three thirty-one.
What about eleven? Oh, that's daylight savings time.
Eleven.
Day before daylight savings time, change it to day before.
The eleventh is a tentative election.
How about the fourth?
Okay, then we guess we're at the fourth.
The fourth.
Keeping it early, 'cause then we've got, we've got a theme here.
I know, but after the end of the first quarter, we don't wanna go early.
The eighteenth would be okay as well.
Which?
March eighteenth would be okay as well, the fourth or the eighteenth. Usually if you, if you, well, see, January, February, March, that wouldn't be a quarterly report month, it would be the next month.
No, it would be the next month, but, but then you've got, if you go really early in March, and, and you wanna give time for that in April, then you're going a long time between meetings.
It's true.
Plus, we don't always get our statistics if we go really early in the month.
If you go really early, you don't get statistics or budget.
Right, so I think the eighteenth is good.
All right, eighteenth for March?
Okay, so March eighteen.
Okay.
Got it?
April.
April. April, um, the only thing is the book sale on the twenty-second, so they'll be set up that day.
Twenty-second?
Nope, not the twenty-second.
Oh, not the twenty-second.
Anything but the twenty-second.
The fifteenth is text day.
Fifteenth looks good. Does anybody care about text day?
No, I'll have mine number one before that. Fifteenth?
Yep.
We'll celebrate.
Is that, is that gonna be in time to get the quarterly report, if we do it that early?
We'll try. We'll do our best.
Why couldn't we do it the twenty-second?
The twenty-second is the book sale.
Oh.
They're setting up for the book sale.
Got it.
They will have this room full of stuff. Jim says no, thank you.
No room for us.
No, no room for us.
Okay.
So then May, whoops. Um, May. Now we are to the point where the staff is not that far along yet, it looks like. So, um, the thirteenth?
Okay.
The twentieth?
Either one.
Either one.
Let's go for the thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
More of a. Middle.
Okay.
Okay, then June.
Tenth?
Um, sure, we could do the tenth. July, they're all open, so.
Middle, fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
What was that, the fifteenth?
The July fifteenth, yep. August, twelfth or the nineteenth?
Either one is fine.
Great. What, what do we, what date do we want?
August nineteenth?
August twelfth or nineteenth?
Okay.
Which one did you want?
Uh, twelfth.
Twelfth.
We went twelve or nineteen?
Nineteen's easier for me.
Nineteen?
Nineteen, okay.
Nineteen?
Nineteen, a little bit later. Okay.
September.
September, Labor Day is on the second.
Do we have the sixteenth to the twenty-third?
Sixteenth to twenty-third is the fall book sale.
So sixteen.
Sixteenth it is.
Sixteen it is.
Sixteenth or fifteenth?
September sixteenth is a Monday.
Sixteenth, yeah, sixteenth.
October.
Fourteenth is Columbus Day. Are we close on Columbus Day? I can't remember.
We are not.
Okay. We could do fourteenth.
So we can do the fourteenth unless somebody else has.
It's fine.
Fourteenth, okay.
November.
November, um, there is an election set up on the fourth, so the eleventh or the eighteenth.
Eleventh is Veterans Day.
Thanksgiving is the twenty-eighth.
What's the twenty, yeah, Thanksgiving is twenty-eight.
Thanksgiving is the twenty-eighth.
So it's.
Are we, are we closed on Veterans Day, or?
We are not.
Okay, so either one is fine then.
So the eleventh or the eighteenth is fine.
What'd you say?
The eleventh or the eighteen.
I say eleventh.
Eleven, all right.
Eleven, okay.
Eleven, eleven is.
Armistice Day.
That's right.
We'll try not to do anything too pressing. Okay, and then December, um.
Earlier is better.
Second, ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, thirtieth, but obviously not the twenty-third, so.
Twenty-third, yeah, so either the ninth or the sixteenth.
Ninth.
I'm out of the country on the ninth.
I'm sorry, what?
Should we try the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Sixteenth? Sixteenth, okay.
But not to Christmas.
What we have for six for June again?
June was the tenth.
June tenth.
June was ten.
Thank you.
You want me to read them all back now?
Yes.
Are we ready? I have January eighth, February fifth, March eighteenth, April fifteenth, May thirteenth, June tenth, July fifteenth, August nineteenth, September sixteenth, October fourteenth, November eleventh, and December sixteenth.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Okay.
Almost at six thirty, right?
Yep.
Six thirty.
On Monday.
Does six thirty work for you guys?
Works for me.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
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 Yep.
Okay.
All right, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion to approve the resolution setting the 2024 library board meeting schedule.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution we have just discussed, setting the 2024 library meeting schedule. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Alison McAden Kiesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Alan Panter?
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy?
Yes.
Maggie Sands?
Yes.
Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Last but not least, um, we would like to set a budget workshop before we do our budget. I like to do sort of a roll-up-your-sleeves, talk about all the details. I usually like to do it at the end of August. You'll be looking at the budget on September eleventh. September eleventh? So I'm thinking maybe the week of August twenty-eighth?
Could we do it on the twenty-eighth?
We could.
It's Monday.
I had a floating holiday that day, but if you wanna do it that day, I'll move it.
What, what date are we looking at? 'Cause I was in the wrong year, I was in August.
Sorry. Twenty twenty-three, we're looking at the last week of August.
Okay.
I don't wanna get to into, I don't want you to get to Labor Day, though, so.
So I'm gone that entire week?
Oh, that entire week, okay.
I'm out of the state, gone. And honestly, the next two weeks, I'm preparing to be gone.
Okay. Oh, okay.
He has a wedding.
Trying to cram all my work in the next two weeks.
Okay.
So, it's kinda tough. You might have to do this one out without me.
Is the six-thirty timeline?
You may do this at any time that you like. It does not have to be six-thirty, it's whatever time you would like to do it.
But you were thinking ideally the last week of August?
I'm sorry?
You were thinking ideally the last week of August?